Okay. The exam is tomorrow at 3:00 PM. We're gonna study for it. More cramming. Now thankfully, we know all the questions. Meaning that all we have to do is re-answer them. I think that's enough. So let's do this, let's have some fun here. Clears Incorporated has a hundred thousand shares of cumulative preferred stock outstanding. The preferred stock pays dividends in the amount of two dollars per share, but because of cash flow problems, the company did not pay any dividends last year. The board of directors plans to pay dividends in the amount of six hundred thousand this year. Required will amount will go to preferred stockholders and how much will be available for stock dividends. Okay, so in other words. versus common stock dividends. Common stock dividends. So you know what? Do I wanna show my face? No, I don't. Let's get back to work. Okay, so first things first, we gotta look at the numbers here. The plan amount equals sixty, six hundred thousand. That's how much we're doing. And the company did not pay the dividend last year. And they're paying two times per share, but they will pay this year. So in other words, this year they're paying two hundred thousand to one and then two hundred thousand to the other. However, because the company not paid the dividend last year, only preferred stock will get two hundred thousand. Meaning that preferred stockholders will get four hundred thousand. And the common stock dividends will be at two hundred thousand. Dividend payment to common stockholders is what it's called. Next question. The next question is right here. Net past company has three hundred thousand dollars, has three hundred thousand shares of common stock authorized, two hundred and seventy thousand shares issued and a hundred thousand shares of treasury stock. The company's board of directors declares a dividend of one dollar per share of common stock. What is the total amount that the dividend will be paid? Okay, so for this, we need to do the formula. The dividend amount to be paid formula. Dividend amount to be paid formula is the shares outstanding minus shares of treasury stock. Wait, no, that's incorrect. It's multiplied by the dividend rate. Shares outstanding multiplied by dividend rate. And shares outstanding is shared issues minus treasury stock shares. Meaning that the, the, the dividend rate is one dollar per share. Therefore, it'll be two hundred and seventy thousand minus a hundred thousand multiplied by one dollar. And this will give me a hundred and seventy thousand dividend amount to be paid. So this is in dollars. Cool. Very, very cool. Up next, we have the next question. To expand operations, Aragon Consulting issued a thousand shares of previously unissued common stock with a par value of one dollar. Price for the stock was fifty dollars per share. Required complete table below indicating the amount, account and direction of the effect of the stock issuance. So let's do that. So that requires us to use the accounting equation. So assets equal liabilities plus stockholders equity. And in this case, we know that the cash is one thousand shares times the price for shares, so one thousand times fifty. That equals cash fifty thousand. And then stockholders equity, cuz that's where we're issuing the stock. Is we're gonna be issuing uh, common stock for a thousand. So the common stock will be one thousand times one, which will equal a thousand. And then to leave this off, we need to do additional paid in capital for common stock. Who messaged me? Oops, don't wanna show that. Let me mute my discord. There we go. Discord is muted. And then additional paid in capital will be fifty thousand minus one thousand. So that will be forty nine thousand dollars. So now, we need to make the journal entry for this. So let's get to work. The journal entry for this is as follows. So it's going to be cash uh, fifty thousand common stock one thousand. And a pick additional paid in capital for common stock will be forty nine thousand. Good. Good, 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 good. So now, the next part of the question states, uh, complete the table below but with par value of two instead of one. Sure. So what the par value of two will do is change the following. Yeah, just turn this into two thousand. And fifty thousand minus two thousand will make this forty eight thousand instead. And then part D will be complete the journal entry for this. So once more will be cash, uh, common stock additional paid in capital, common stock. And it'll be fifty thousand, two thousand, forty eight thousand. Awesome. So what's next? We have to do ten dash eight. That requires me to go back a chapter. Good, 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 good. Everything is going well. Okay, ten dash eight. That's not the one. Here's ten to eight. Okay. So ten dash eight states the following. On January first, Innovative Solutions Incorporated issued two hundred thousand dollars in bonds at face value. Bonds have a standard interest rate of six percent. Bonds mature in ten years and pay interest once per year on December thirty first. Required one, prepare the required journal entries to record the bond issuance, interest payment on December thirty first, and early retirement of bonds. Assume the bonds are retired immediately after the first interest payment at a price, at a quoted price of a hundred and one. This one hundred and one is a percentage, so let's do this. So in other words, we gotta ask ourselves, what do we know? Well, we know the following. Uh, two hundred thousand bonds issued. Uh, bonds issued at face value. And then interest is equal to six percent or zero point zero six. And we know that bonds mature in ten years. So now we gotta do journal entries. Journal entries one, two, and three. So the first one will be for January first. And that'll be, what does it say? Prepare the journal required entries to record the bond issuance. So first we gotta do the bond issuance. And that'll be cash and bonds payable. And it'll be two hundred K, two hundred K. Then we have to do the next one for December thirty first. And that will be assume, okay, interest payment on September thirty first, early retirement of the bond. Okay, then. So the early retirement of the bond would be, what would that be? Mature in ten years, it says. Okay, so it'll be the following, two hundred thousand times zero point zero six close times twelve over twelve because January to December is twelve months. And that'll give us twelve thousand. Meaning that for December thirty first, we have an interest expense over cash. That'll be twelve thousand. This is a debit. And then the cash will be credit of twelve thousand. And then we do it again for December thirty first. And this will be for the assume the bond will retire immediately after the first interest payment at quoted price of a hundred and one. So to do that, we have to look at some bonds payable is equal to two hundred thousand. Then we have loss on bond retirement. And then cash. So we know that the interest is a hundred and one, so two hundred thousand times one point zero one, cuz it's a percentage, will equal twenty thousand, two, uh, two hundred and two thousand. Meaning that the loss on bond retirement will be two thousand. And those are your journal entries. Pretty simple. Pretty good, pretty fun stuff. Now we have to move on to ten dash three. Let's write this stuff out. Whoa, that was weird. McLot Company completed the salaries and wages payroll for March. The payroll provided the following details. Salaries and wages earned, employee income taxes withheld, FICA taxes withheld, and unemployment taxes. Didn't I just answer this? I swear I just answered this. Uh, required, okay. Considering both employee and employer payroll taxes, use the preceding information to calculate total labor cost for company for March. Okay. So let's do the total labor cost. Time to calculate total labor cost. So what do we know? We know salary and wage earned. We know that we have employee income taxes withheld. We know we have FICA taxes withheld. And we have unemployment taxes. And the value here will be four hundred thousand. And then employee income tax is given, the question is thirty seven thousand. FICA taxes withheld is twenty eight thousand six hundred. Unemployment taxes is two thousand seven hundred and eighty. So to calculate total labor cost, we must use the following formula. Should be sal and wages earned plus FICA taxes withheld plus unemployment taxes. And that'll give us four hundred thousand plus twenty eight thousand six hundred plus two thousand seven hundred and eighty. Good. Good, 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 good. And now that we've done that, we will use a calculator and it'll give us the following number. Where is my calculator? Here's my calculator. Calculator gives me four hundred and thirty one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. So now I have to do the, the recording payroll cost. So keep these numbers in mind because this is gonna be very important, very important. Prepare the journal entry to record payroll for March, including employee deductions and record, including report, employee deduction. So this is part one. But we're not including payroll tax, so payroll tax is not around. Therefore, if we just wanna do the answer and not worry about anything else, this is what we'll do. That works. So first, March thirty first, we have salaries and wage expense. Debit. Credit. Then we have withheld income tax payable. And then we have FICA payable. And then we have cash. So we know that the debit here is four hundred thousand. What about yellow? What does that look like? Withheld income tax payable is thirty seven thousand. I like it. FICA payable is twenty eight thousand six hundred. So to get cash, it'll be four hundred thousand minus thirty seven thousand. So three, nine, six. Oops. I made a mistake. So it'll be minus thirty seven. What am I doing? Three, nine, ten? So it'll be sixty three thousand. But then there's a three here. Minus two eight six zero zero. So it'll be two, ten, so zero, zero, four, five, twelve, four, three, three. Which will give us thirty three, three hundred and thirty four thousand four hundred. And that's journal entry number one. Pretty good. Very good indeed. And now for journal entry two, which is also on March thirty first. What does it say? Record employers FICA taxes and unemployment taxes. So in other words, this is a payroll tax expense. So this will be FICA payable and also unemployment tax payable. Debit, credit. It'll be two thousand seven hundred and eighty on credit. Oops. Oops, 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 oops. So the unemployment tax payable is two thousand seven hundred and eighty. FICA is twenty eight thousand six hundred. And then the sum of this will be thirty one thousand three hundred and eighty. That's our payroll tax expense on debit. Good. So that's both of them. Now let's go on to ten dash one. Which is honestly going to be a really long one that I think about it. But it'll probably be really fun when we do it. And if I recall correctly, it only requires part one. Cool, easy curve. This is exactly what I want. This. Easy Curve Company completed the following transaction. Annual accounting period ends December thirty first. There are your following transactions required for each listed transaction and related adjusting entry. Identify the account about and effect of the accounting equation for each transaction and related adjusting entry indicate whether the debt to asset ratio is increase or decrease. There's no change. We're actually not doing part two, we're only doing part one. Because part two is just, uh, too long. Anyways, part one requires us to make a giant table. Sounds like fun. So how many does she have? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. That sounds like a lot, and then you remember that some of these, like December twentieth, will be counted twice. Let's begin. Hmm, that's visible. So we have a date up here. So we have January eighth. And we'll have our asset, which in this case, uh, purchased merchandise on account at fourteen thousand dollars. So this is a perpetual inventory system, so inventory for fourteen thousand dollars equals liabilities plus stockholder equity. So the liabilities here will be accounts payable. And this will also equal fourteen thousand dollars. Great, then we go to the next date, January seventeen. Let's try to cover this up so I can't even see what's going on. Okay, January seventeen, we paid for January eighth certificate, so in other words, we cash. Cash fourteen thousand. And then for here, it'll also be accounts payable. And this will also be fourteen thousand, but now it's negative. Then we have April first, which is received forty thousand dollars from National Bank after signing a twelve month six percent promissory note. Okay, so here, we're going to have to do the following. We received cash and the cash was forty thousand dollars. Then we have a notes payable long term because it's over a year. Actually, no, twelve, twelve months is short term, isn't it? Let me look it up. It's short term. Notes payable. This will be short term. And this will be for forty thousand dollars. Then we go to June third. June third states purchase merchandise on account for a cost of eighteen thousand. So in other words, uh, inventory equals eighteen thousand dollars. And here we have once again, accounts payable will be for eighteen thousand dollars. Then we go to July thirty first, which says rented out a small office in the building owned by Easy Curve Company. Collects six hundred rent in advance amounting to six thousand dollars. Okay. So here, we collected money, so we collected cash for six thousand dollars. And then oops, we skipped some lines. Forgot to do June fifth. June fifth is why did I do that? It's July fifth. Yeah. July fifth will be paid for June third purchase, so cash minus eighteen K accounts payable. Minus eighteen K. Good. Good. Now we go to July thirty first. Yeah. July thirty first says rented out a small office in advance amounting to six thousand. So in other words, we use cash and deferred revenue. And it'll be six thousand, six thousand. Good. So now we do December twenty. December twenty states collected a thousand cash on account, a hundred cash on account. December twenty states collected a thousand cash on account, a hundred cash on account. From a customer. Okay. Sorry, I'm getting messages. Okay. Collected a hundred on cash on account from a customer. So it'll be cash accounts receivable. So it'll be a hundred and then negative a hundred. Then we go to December thirty first. Uh determine the wages of sixty five hundred were earned but not yet paid. Therefore wages salary and wages expense. And over here and this will be six thousand five hundred. And then salary and wages payable. Wait, no, 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 no. Liability is payable. And then equities and expense. Salaries. And wages. Expense. And this will be sixty five hundred. Cool. So now we have to go to December thirty first again. Uh adjusted the accounts at the year end related to interest. Well, we know that our interest. Regarding the National Bank was six percent of forty thousand. In other words, and it was done back in January. Wait, no, 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 not January. Was it January? No, it was in April. So. Jan, Feb, March, April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December. So here we have here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Counting itself will be nine. So nine. Meaning that. For this case, it'll be. Forty thousand. Times zero point zero six. Times. Nine over twelve, which will equal. Was that equal? Eighteen hundred? I think it's eighteen hundred. So if this is eighteen hundred, then this is accounts payable. I mean accounts payable interest payable and interest expense. So this is a. Interest payable. Eighteen hundred. And then interest expense. So be eighteen hundred. Yeah. Let's do this. So now we do another one for December thirty first. It says adjusted accounts end of year related to rent. So what exactly have we gotten on rent? Well, regarding rent, we rented out a small office. That being July. And we collected six months of rent in advance. However, that's besides the point. So we have. Uh deferred revenue. And over here we have rent revenue. So to do this, we look at where we rented out at six thousand. Multiplied by. If that was in July. July, August, September, October, November, December. Hmm, end of July, so Septem- uh August, September, October, November, December. That's five. Five over twelve. Or is it? No, no, because it's six months of rent, five over six. Five over six and that'll give us. Because this is the deferred revenue and we're losing it as we go along. That'll give us five K. Five K. And let's see, do ten dash one. Pretty simple now that I do it like this, but still a pain to actually go through. And now we have to go to the next one being nine dash four. Oh yeah, this is the one he's gonna give everyone and this is the one where people are gonna either pass or fail the test. I can feel it. So why am I so hell bet on nine dash four? Well, truthfully. Because there's so much to do in nine dash four. Okay, if y'all think this was big. Nine dash four is massive compared to this. Don't take my word for it. If you watched the previous study video, then you know exactly what I'm talking about. Following transactions and adjusting entries were completed by a paper packaging company called reviewer graphics international company uses straight line depreciation for trucks and other vehicles. Double declining balance depreciation for buildings and straight line amortization for patents. All right, so pay attention to what that says because it's gonna be very relevant later. These are your dates. Required prepare the journal entry required on each of the above dates. Sure thing. Sure thing, sir. First, we begin on January second. And that is for. Paid ninety five thousand dollars cash to purchase storage shed components. So storage shed is a building. And then this is cash. And this will be debit. Credit. Over there. So it'll be ninety five thousand. Ninety five thousand. Up next, we have to go to January third. Which says paid five thousand cash to have a storage shed erected. Storage shed has an estimated life of ten years and a residual value of ten K. So you don't gotta worry about that just yet, but we'll get to that number eventually. Storage shed. Will be building. And cash. For five thousand. And five thousand. Up next, we have to do April first. April first says. Paid thirty eight thousand cash to purchase a pickup truck for use in the business. Truck has an estimated useful life of five years and a residual value of eight thousand dollars. Vehicle is to be recorded in truck account. So in other words, it'll be truck. And it'll be cash. And the number is thirty eight thousand. Then we go to the next day, May thirteen. Okay, paid. Two hundred and fifty dollars cash for minor repairs to the pickup truck's upholstery. Sure thing, sure thing. Sure thing. That would be repairs and maintenance expense. And then the other one will be. Well, we paid it in, which is cash. And that says two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty. Good. So now we have to go to the next one, July first. July first says paid two N T thousand cash to purchase patent rights or new paper. Manufacturing process patent is estimated to have a remaining useful life of five years. So that would qualify itself as what exactly? Oh my goodness, I forgot to write that down. July first will be patents and cash. Sure thing. Patents. Cash. And they'll be for twenty thousand each. Then we have December thirty first. Which says. Record depreciation and amortization of pickup truck, storage shed and patent. Meaning that we have multiple to do. In other words, we have a depreciation expense. We also have amortization expense. And it'll be for. The. The items. Therefore, it's along the lines of. Depreciation. Expense. For the, what does it say? For the pickup truck. Depreciation expense. Building. And then. Amortization. Accumulated. Amortization. So. We need to collect it for all of them. Therefore, we gotta get some values figured out. For the building. So let's start with the building. Which will be the second one here, but actually you know what? Let's start with the truck because the truck is easier. It'll be thirty eight thousand. Minus eight thousand. The reason we're doing this for the building first is because. Uses straight line depreciation for trucks and the vehicle and double declining balance for buildings. So double declining balance will be used here. In other words, cost minus. Hmm residual. Multiplied. By. Wait, isn't double declining balance by two? Why do I have it divided by one? Something's wrong. Wait, what is it? What is it for buildings? Straight line for trucks, double declining balance for buildings. Okay. Oh yeah, it is. I'm I was right. I was right. I was right. So for the building, because it turns out that the. Oh right, I was doing trucks. I was doing trucks. This is going on. So it'll be one over five because the useful life is five years. And then we've been using the truck since April, so nine over twelve. And if you put this inside of your calculation. You will get what will you get? You will get four thousand five hundred. And then for the building, it'll be ninety five thousand. Minus. Five thousand. Then because this is a double, double declining because it's a building. Double declining for building. Good to know. It will say the following. Times two over how many years is this? Is it ten years, right? Yeah, the the thing has a ten year life. Estimated ten years of useful and a residual value of five thousand. Wait, a residual value of ten thousand, but we don't care about the residual value because when you're doing the. The the ten thousand is a is a red herring. It's just a five thousand. And it's not even a minus. It's actually a plus. Ninety five thousand plus five thousand. Twenty two over ten. And this should get me twenty thousand. Then for amortization, amortization will be rather easy to calculate. The patent costed us twenty thousand dollars. Minus zero. I shouldn't even think we have to do a minus. It's just twenty thousand dollars. Because we're calculating amortization. And amortization will be through life expectancy. The amortization. Is expected to have what? Five years? Yeah, useful life of five years. Multiplied by. How many, what mother we on? We did this. When we did this, it was July. So July first. July, August, September, October, November, December. That's six months. So be six over twelve. And that'll give us two thousand. Therefore, for the amortization expense, it's just two thousand. And then for depreciation expense, the sum of these two, so twenty four five zero zero. Yeah. That's how you do it. That's what I'm talking about. I apparently cannot aim. Oh yeah. That's what I'm talking about. Look how great this looks. All tiny and legible. Is this legible, guys? I don't know. So the next thing we need to do this for is June thirtieth. Of the next year. Sold pickup truck for thirty three thousand cash recorded appreciation of truck prior to recording its disposal. So. In other words. We have a few things. We have cash. I think we have depreciation of truck. Gain and truck. I think that's what it's called. Yeah, it's accumulated. Depreciation truck, I believe, or is it accumulated truck? It's accumulation depreciation on the truck. Yeah. I was right. So what's going on is I completely skipped a step again. So June thirtieth has a depreciation expense. And then we have accumulated depreciation truck. so accumulated depreciation truck will be what why would it be three thousand I'm trying to figure that out all right so for depreciation expense for the truck you do the formula depreciation expense minus equipment times one over five because it's some years times six over twelve so in other words we're going to have thirty eight thousand minus eight thousand multiply one over five multiplied by six over twelve and that gives us three thousand three thousand nice so now that we actually have this value let's continue on what's the next thing for thirty first probably nothing thinking about it a lot so let's check sold pickup truck for thirty three thousand cash okay okay so Jeff once again June thirtieth we have um cash then we have accumulated depreciation truck and those will be thirty three thousand and then three K plus forty five will be seventy five K seven point five K and then here we have the gain on disposal and the truck you know the truck was thirty eight thousand so we take the sum of these subtracted by these and we're left with twenty five hundred damn we still didn't have enough room to fit the whole thing I'm just kinda disappointed now I genuinely thought we could fit it okay so now it's time to do the December ones all by themselves yeah that's right the December ones by themselves let's let's see it actually I think I could just fit them all here you know what that's what I do operation fit everything some way somehow yeah that works D R C R so December thirty first what are you telling me my man record depreciation on storage shed record the patent amortization after recording patent amortization determined that the patient was impaired and wrote off its recording book value wrote down book value to zero okay so first depreciation on storage shed so in other words for December thirty first depreciation expense and then it will be accumulated depreciation billing which will be following calculation done by hand which will be ninety five K plus five K multiplied by two over ten those were done at the end I believe yeah two over ten because it's double depreciation ten years that'll leave me with sixteen K then for the next one we have to do patent amortization amortization expense and accumulated amortization and then accumulated amortization will come from the fact that it costed twenty K wait 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 yeah the patent was twenty K really that doesn't sound right no that doesn't sound right at all right because it's a straight line so it is twenty K where did I get the twenty K from because amortization was uh oh yeah yeah so the patent twenty K that's where I get it from so twenty K span of life is five so it will be four K like that excellent then we go to the next one which will be December thirty first accumulated amortization and then patents so for the patents what do we got to do patents we have to calculate with the following yeah I I am really tired but we're gonna get this done we'll notice that this is a two K every time we mention patents you just add them up so in other words it'll be two thousand plus the four thousand here that's six thousand because this is where the patents come from see this plus this equals four K and the last one will be will be zeroing out the account so impairment loss and patents so the total account is two hundred K so in other words just two hundred K minus I mean twenty K minus six K so we'll have fourteen K fourteen K yeah that's totally how you do it guys okay that is nine dash four part one only pretty long pretty grueling but it's the answer you know it's the answer now we need to do nine dash three you know what I think for the study session that's good enough I will attempt to study the rest of it in the morning that will not be shown have a good evening